Say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I, um, I'm just gonna read the official proclamation for Tree City USA Arbor Day as it's coming up this weekend on, well, Saturday, the twenty-sixth. So, New Prague was just made a Tree City USA here over the last few months, so it's kind of a nice, um, honor. So whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting, heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for homes, fuel for fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. So I, Dwayne J. Jerick, Mayor of the City of New Prague, uh, do hereby proclaim April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three as Arbor Day in the City of New Prague. Is Arbor Day the twenty-ninth, and what's Earth Day?
Yes, our Arbor Day.
Oh, our Arbor Day is the twenty-ninth?
So we're doing our tree giveaway.
Oh, we are, okay, all right. But it is the twenty-second, correct? I think.
Earth Day, yeah.
Earth Day, okay, all right, so. Cool, thank you. We'll put it up in our nice display case down by the police department that Tim likes.
Yes.
There we go. Okay, I would take approval of the regular agenda. So moved. There's been a motion made by Rick.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Uh, we do have, uh, slight amendment. Um, Chief Applin did pass out a memo, uh, for a temporary patio extension. If we could just add that to general business at the end.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do you wanna amend your motion there, Rick?
Um, yeah.
Okay, there's been an amendment. Does somebody wanna second that?
Second.
And a motion by Bruce to second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, next up, we have the swearing-in of Officer Joshua Walton and Officer Nicholas Folkerts, and so Joshua is on my list first, so.
So what side of the room is your cheering crowd? The sad side?
It's like a ride in the groom.
So raise your right hand. I, Joshua Walton, on my honor, will nev- Go ahead.
I, Joshua Walton, on my honor.
Will never betray my badge.
Will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character or the public trust.
My character or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself.
I will always have the courage to hold myself.
And others accountable for our actions.
And others accountable for our actions.
I will uphold the United States Constitution.
I will uphold the United States Constitution.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And its laws.
And its laws.
I will uphold the ordinances of the City of New Prague.
I will uphold the ordinances of the City of New Prague.
And faithfully serve my agency and community to the best of my abilities.
Faithfully serve my community and agency to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. All right, Nick?
Guys.
Come on up. And if you do come to the American Legion on steak night, I'm usually there, and I offered to buy him, so. Buy him a dinner when he was there, but he turned me down. Anyway, raise your right hand. I, Nicholas Folkerts.
I, Nicholas Folkerts.
On my honor.
On my honor.
Will never betray my badge.
Will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself.
I will always have the courage to hold myself.
And others accountable for our actions.
And others accountable for our actions.
I will uphold the United States Constitution.
I will uphold the United States Constitution.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And its laws.
And its laws.
I will uphold the ordinances of the City of New Prague.
I will uphold the ordinances of the City of New Prague.
And faithfully serve my agency.
And faithfully serve my agency.
And community to the best of my abilities.
And community to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. You need to sign the, and don't tell me you don't have a pen.
I don't.
Here you go.
That's like the number-one rule, isn't it?
Well, you gotta have, gotta have two.
That's what they taught me and cops.
Gotta have two.
Don't worry about your gun, but make sure you have a pen.
Go get some state-issued ones.
Case one runs out.
We always had to have two.
Well, congratulations, guys.
Congratulations, guys, good luck out there.
In light of what's going on in our communities close in Wisconsin, you know, it's a noble job. I did it for thirty-five years, so, um, just be safe out there. Thanks.
Patrick, do you wanna catch, get any pictures of with their families, perhaps?
I think they're both veterans, if I remember right now. I think he, and he might still be in the Army, but I think he was a Marine.
Nick was.
They both had military background?
Yeah. And then, um.
They're better cops.
And then, um. Yeah. But.
We might have to rethink that. Just gonna ask him about that later.
Yep. And then Joshua's wife works for the chain.
She's in town?
Yeah.
The, uh, Wisconsin, that's a town I go through, it's not, it's probably, hmm.
Twelve, Chittagun or Cameron?
Uh, Cameron, about fifteen miles, thirteen miles from our Cameron, so.
Yeah, so that was close.
Familiar with that area, yeah. And I've been to Chittagun a few times.
Okay, see, uh, did somebody forget their coat?
No, nope.
Oh, he's coming back, okay, all right.
He's here for the Bricks Boat Works.
Gotcha. All right, um, we'll continue on with meeting, uh, consent agenda. I would take a motion to approve unless anybody has any questions.
So moved.
Maggie made the motion, is there a second? Okay, Sean made the second. Um, any other questions?
Uh, no questions, but I would like to just do a quick update, um, because Bruce did send me an email with a couple of questions.
Okay.
So just to kinda fill you guys in on, uh, the financial report. Uh, so he's had a few questions. Uh, first, he'd noticed that the, uh, interest income was negative. Uh, I can't remember which page that's on. The reason why it's negative is, uh, because our earnings are in CDs, and they show up as a negative balance right now on the statement because they're not mature. So by the end of the year, that will reconcile and be positive. And, uh. Uh, the other one being just, there were some high spending in a few categories. Uh, in the tech network, uh, that department was showing as really high spending, not over budget for the year, but definitely high on the year. Uh, that was due to the new finance software being paid for, and so a bulk of that department had its spending very early on in the year. Uh, government buildings, it actually is, uh, showing a small, uh, has a very small overall budget, and really is three items that are high. One of them being professional services is nine hundred dollars per line item. That was just due to incorrect coding, and we'll take care of that one. Uh, that should be taken care of. Uh, and the other ones being natural gas. We are sixty-six percent of the year for the budgeted year, which kinda makes sense because usually the first part of the year is colder than the last part. And then, uh, repairs and maintenances are high just due to repairing a heat exchanger. And that is the one line item that we've had for that. Uh, streets had a few high items, such as we had an employee take insurance who we weren't expecting, um, as we didn't, um, they hadn't taken insurance previously. Uh, overtime wages are up with all the snowplowing we've done so far, and then, uh, workers' comp, uh, is fully paid up for the year, and insurance premiums are mostly paid up, as well as capital outwa- outweigh is half-spent through just because we budgeted for two vehicles, and one of them has now been purchased. And so it's showing fifty percent spending, even though we're only twenty-five percent of the year through. And finally, the parks is up due to a two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar piece of equipment that we planned on purchasing, just got purchased. And so instead of spreading out that two-hundred thousand throughout the year, um, that purchase was just made in January. So, um, all the spending is on track, even though it looks like a few departments are higher than what they should be for the year.
Okay.
Thanks for that, Josh. I just, uh, since you brought up the financials, the, the golf, uh, department, is there some, anything unusual in the first three months there?
I, I have not noticed anything unusual. That's one where they incur a lot of expenses just due to staffing early on, but revenues didn't really kick in, and believe until last year is when the, um, or not last year, last week, uh, course opened. And so usually the expenses far outpace the revenues until about halfway through the summer, they seem to catch up at that point.
I just noticed the revenue is forty thousand, forty-one thousand less than the same time period last year, and we wouldn't have, we had better weather probably, but would, I don't think we had people golfing in March, but.
Uh, no, I would have to, I would have checked exactly. I guess nothing jumped out to me, um, as being overly odd about this year. I know some of those too, if they, you just happen to get the right reservations, uh.
I was just wondering if memberships are down, or.
I have not heard, but I can certainly check.
If we have a different issue happening or something. Okay, thank you.
It's our first week of golfing. Last year was in, the second week of March, I was already out on the course. So we're about a month behind compared to last year.
You, you were on the course on the weekend?
Last year in March, I was on.
Yes, on, on Saturdays and Sundays, he was out on the course during March.
Okay, just wanna clarify. It was that earlier?
Do you get that, Matt? Did you get that joke? All right, okay, so there's been a motion made, is there a second? Or did we make a second?
Uh, yes, there was a second.
Yeah.
Okay, there was a second by Maggie, wasn't it? Or was it Sean?
Maggie.
Sean made the, okay. Um, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, city engineer update, do we have anything other than the letter, miscellaneous?
Uh, no, I do not believe we have anything other than the regular letter.
Anything on the twenty-twenty-three street and utility improvement project, nothing on there?
Uh, they had a neighborhood meeting here last week, um, that was pretty decently attended. I know talking to Matt, um, he thought it was a very productive meeting, and what, twenty-five, twenty-six people show up for? So, um, and I believe this week they started potentially removing asphalt, correct? Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, they put up the temporary water lines, the starting this week and stuff, so.
Yeah, that is where we're at with twenty-twenty-three.
Matt, can you just give us a quick synopsis of that meeting? Because I heard there were some people that weren't happy about sidewalks and whatnot. I mean, what was the general tone?
Uh, we had one person that questioned the sidewalks, that has questioned it for the whole project. Like, it doesn't, they understand why we're putting it in, they just don't want it on their property. Other than that, I would say, we had twenty-six, twenty-five of them were very understanding of the whole project.
They were, okay, great.
Yeah, I got a phone call about it, it was probably them same people. So they are lobbying around looking for a friendly area. Like I told them, everybody likes sidewalks when they're across the street. But, you know, they wanna know the benefit of it, and while you have the kids running up and down that street, uh, for their bus stops and stuff, that's and enough right there.
Okay.
Honestly, it was the best turnout I've ever had. Um, and again, we had some great feedback from everybody, uh. A lot of questions, mainly about sidewalks and assessments, but they all understood.
Okay.
Honestly, after we explained to them the public safety aspect of it, uh, how we come up with what side we put them on, um, they all were very understanding of why we're putting them up.
Okay, I just had a call from John Mueller from the paper wanting to know.
I talked to him on Friday.
You did, okay, okay. I didn't talk to him till today, but, okay. I thought maybe there was a worse tone, but thank you for it.
We can talk about it after the meeting, but no, there. Yeah, no, it was just the one resident, and I, we've talked to him many times, me and Ken, so.
Okay. Great, good to hear.
Okay, um, at this point, the public is invited to be heard on matters not on the agenda. Is there anybody online or, um, in person here that wants to talk to anything that's not on the agenda? No? Okay, um, with that, um, we will, uh, go to the next item, which is a public hearing for the vacation of certain assessments to the plat of New Prague Business Park Eleventh Edition as proposed by properties of T and L LLC, Bricks Boat Works, so.
Mr. Mayor, do we have, we don't have, uh, SEH online?
No.
So there isn't gonna be any reports on the, uh, your street utility projects?
No, Matt, just.
Oh, but yeah, yeah, our, our, our update really on the, uh, the project right now, we had a meeting last week that went fairly well, and then, um, started removals tomorrow.
I was actually referring to the Columbus Avenue deal. I was just kinda surprised that we're waiting until the middle of June to put that last inch on.
No.
I don't know.
Oh, uh, yeah, I mean, I, I'll bring it up with Chris and see if I can get you guys an update and shoot that out.
All right.
Okay, so, um.
Mitch, could you pop up my computer?
I will, um. Open the public hearing for Bricks Boat Works, um, so, go ahead.
All right, so very briefly, back on March twenty-second, we had called for the hearing tonight for, um, the easements that are outlined in red on the New Prague Business Park Eleventh Edition, uh, plat. These are being replaced with the new plat, which you will be considering later in the meeting for, uh, New Prague Bricks Boat Works plat, uh, which will put easements basically around the perimeter of the, the lot, which is the outer boundary of the property you actually see in the overhead there. So we did have one comment back from Centerpoint Energy. They did not have any issues with any of the vacations that you see here tonight, and they also didn't have any issues with the new plat that will establish the new easement. So, um, with that, I don't have any other comments from staff at this point. And ultimately, um, I think at a later agenda, I think one or two down the agenda, we'll get to the actual adoption of the ordinance, which is what his staff, uh, is recommending for action.
Okay, does anybody have any questions, um, of staff or from the council? Okay, hearing none, I will take a motion to close this public hearing. So moved.
Second.
Um, I'll back up. Do the Bricks wanna speak to this at all? Okay. So you made a motion to close it? Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
Bruce made a second. Um, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. So number nine is an ordinance for introduction, introduction of ordinance number three-three-seven, vacating certain easements in a plat of Dome subdivision as proposed by Brian Dome, Auto Wash Systems Incorporated.
All right, so tonight, as we did with the, uh, Bricks easement vacation, um, back in March, um, we are looking at scheduling a public hearing on May fifteenth for the vacation of the easement shown in red on the overhead. Again, there are the existing easements within the Dome subdivision. That is gonna be a replat. Planning Commission is reviewing that at the meeting here in April, and we will have the final plat approval with the hearing for the vacation on that May fifteenth meeting. So looking to call for the hearing tonight, and also introduce the ordinance for the vacation of the easements. And again, it's just the existing easements within every portion you see outlined in red, and we will have a new easement around the perimeter of the lot, which is basically the full, you can kinda follow my pointer here. Um, they're plating one large lot around the whole, uh, property that you're seeing on that overhead there, so. Just erasing what we no longer need with the new plat, and that's really all I have, uh, for the staff comments on that item.
So he purchased all that property?
He has owned all that for a few years.
Oh, he has, okay. So I would take it he's probably demoing the houses or moving.
Uh, there will be at least one of the homes demoed in the short term.
Okay.
And we'll get into more of those details at the, uh, next meeting.
Just a curiosity question. All right, any other questions? Otherwise I'd take a motion for adoption. I'll make the motion to adopt ordinance number three-three-seven.
Yeah, that's right.
Second.
Three-three-seven.
Yeah.
Uh, this is, this would be just for the introduction. So, yeah, you're approving the first reading.
Correct.
Of the ordinance, three-three-seven.
Okay. So, and Rick seconded my motion, so without any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, now we're up to the ordinance vacating certain easements, uh, ordinance three-three-six for Bricks Boat Works.
This is the one that we just had the public hearing.
Yeah, nothing.
So, so there's nothing more to add? Okay.
Are we at the final stage that we can approve it?
Yes, we will have the plat obviously later here tonight. So maybe just approve it conditioned on the plat being approved, um, at one of the, I forget what agenda item that would be. Uh, eleven A.
The next one.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number three-three-six on the conditions, the resolution, item A is approved. Um, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Maggie made the second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, now, resolution granting approval of preliminary and final plat of New Prague Bricks Boat Works consisting of one lot and public right-of-way for Eighth Avenue on ten-point-three-seven acres.
Right, so I've got a quick PowerPoint for that item here tonight. Little background, uh, the pointer and final plat was reviewed by the Planning Commission, uh, back in their meeting on, uh, March twenty-second. As the mayor said, it was a one-lot plat, including additional right-of-way, uh, for the future extension of Eighth Avenue Northwest on ten-point-three-seven acres. The actual lot, um, with all the property combined together is ten-point-zero-three acres, which will comprise the lot on which they are building their, um, new, uh, company, uh, location. So we did not have any public comment at the hearing on March twenty-second, and the Planning Commission recommended approval of the plat. Give you a little overview here again, uh, the plat is outlined in red on the map, and it is zoned in the purple or pink color, which is I-ONE Light Industrial. Um, we'll get into this more with the conditions permit, uh, review, but the adjacent property to the west is medium-density residential zoning, and, um, all the property to the east and south and north is either zoned or guided future, um, I-ONE Light Industrial. So, uh, we really do have that dividing line there along that west property line, and that's important as we get into the conditions permit discussion, that, uh, we'll get into the details of the screening there. Uh, with that, again, it's just a one-lot plat, um, so replating three lots of the property they're buying from the city, and then incorporating the, uh, approximately four-point-zero-two-acre lot to the north that, uh, council approved the annexation on about a month ago now. So pretty simple for the one lot, and as I noted, a little bit of future right-of-way of Eighth Avenue. Uh, one of the agenda items that we'll talk about this, a little further, the development agreement outlines that we don't want, uh, Eighth Avenue constructed uh, within this new right-of-way being platted at this point, and the development agreement outlines that, uh, the city can, uh, move that forward when it's deemed necessary. Basically, if other property develops or if there's a traffic demand, uh, needing that. But at this point, we don't wanna just build that road unneededly at this point. Uh, here's just a clean version of that final plat again, um, just one lot and one block. Couple of photos here, should've got new ones without the snow on there, but.
Well, you would've added doom this afternoon.
Again, um, just directly north of the, um, Great Rare Energy property there. So staff and the Planning Commission did recommend, uh, approval of the resolution for the preliminary and final plat, um, at tonight's meeting.
Okay.
With that, I'll just put a copy of the plat up for review.
Any questions? Otherwise I'd take a motion for approval of the resolution.
I make a motion to approve a resolution twenty-three dash zero-four dash one seven dash zero-one.
Okay, there's.
I'll second.
Maggie seconded. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Now we have the next resolution, conditional use permit.
The resolution we just passed. I thought we did the resolution for the plat.
Yeah, that's what we did.
Yeah, for the preliminary and final plat.
But then we have the subdivision agreement, which is item I below there.
Oh, so that's a, that's a separate item?
Separate item to approve that subdivision agreement. So if we could do that one, would that?
Yep.
So the subdivision agreement basically, um, outlines a few different things, mainly the development, uh, fees for park dedication, uh, water area charge, and, um, I think those are the, the main ones for that that are actually included in the resolution for the plat. And then, as I commented, uh, during the plat review for Eighth Avenue Northwest, how the future assessment for that could work, but at this point, we're not requiring that to be built, so.
What page is that on?
From the develop, or from, uh, city attorney, um, included in there about that.
What page does that start on?
That would be, um.
That would be page seventy-one or seventy-three.
Seventy-three?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
I think so. Ain't that it?
No, it's thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
Is it really?
Yeah.
You skipped it? No, we started with the ordinance, and then.
Yeah, it's thirty-nine.
And then we keep going down. I'll wait for Ken.
I'm getting.
No, we. So, that doesn't make sense.
It doesn't.
Page, because page thirty-seven is vacating the easements.
Okay.
And page thirty-nine is the signature block.
We got two preliminary plat approvals, I think.
Right.
Oh, forty-three, forty.
And then on page forty-two is, is resolus, resolution twenty-three oh-four seventeen zero-one, which we just approved.
Okay, it did not make it in there.
So there's nothing for the subdivision.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
I was gonna say, I put bookmarks in this time, and I thought they were all true.
I think the bookmarks are right, but it doesn't, I don't see a bookmark for a subdivision.
It's not in there. Let me pull up the memo for you.
That would be my fault. I'm missing Barb more than I know. I try to assemble these packets myself.
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll pull it up here.
Yeah, you did a losey job.
Do you know when we're gonna get that software that's really gonna help us with these packets?
Yes, so while we're waiting for him to pull that up, are you all, uh, aware of how to be able to manipulate with bookmarks to be able to jump around?
Is that this, the one on the far left there?
Yeah, on the far left, there should be a button.
Yep.
That you can click.
There's actually four of them, four buttons.
Yeah, so this one looks like the flag that's hanging down, kind of. Clicking on that will pop up all of the bookmarks that I put in the light, it'll jump to each item individually. Anybody need help with that?
Thanks for putting those in, I thought they were very helpful.
Were you able to find those, Maggie?
No, I'm not.
Me neither.
I'm usually pretty familiar with Adobe. Do I just have a different view?
Here you go.
Okay, all right, so it's not, it's not a flag?
Yeah, you're using, uh, Edge instead of Adobe, so it's, it's just a little bit different. But yeah, so that table of contents is, would be the same one. So yeah, you can jump to each item there.
Okay, thank you.
So where are we all gonna be at right now? This, because, because we, none of us have it.
All right, so click over on this.
Okay.
I just did.
I'll, I'll run through it, it's a template of our development agreement we've used a million times, but I'll cover the pertinent parts.
On that metal, pop itself open.
Oh, for this one and then this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Try clicking the little arrow. There you go.
Oh, I see.
So you can jump to each item.
Perfect. Very nice, thank you.
All right, so as we have with any, um, plat, uh, we have subdivision agreement that city attorney drafts up. Can it outline anything from development of public improvements, you know, road construction, development fees, uh, or future, in this case, future road, uh, development? So, um, it's about a twenty-eight page document, but we're not gonna run through all twenty-eight pages here for tonight. But I did want to point out a couple of specific, um, things that I wanted to, uh, that are unique to this one. First item, and I'll zoom in so we can all read it. Item five and five A is regarding future street improvement. So whenever we have, uh, land that's being dedicated in a plat, typically in a subdivision, if we're, uh, requiring it to be built right of way, this would outline, uh, you know, the developers paying for that or a portion of it, and how they plan to complete that, how we would do inspections, and then ultimately get it accepted by the city. In this case, we do not feel that we need that Eighth Avenue for that portion basically adjacent to their outdoor storage area, um, at this point. And this says that the future extension of Eighth Avenue Northwest will be included within the right of way that we're gaining through the plat. Uh, but at this point, uh, we are not, uh, relying on that to be constructed at this point. So it says in item A, city developer acknowledged the future construction of Eighth Avenue Northwest may, um, need some certain permitting. We have just real blanket language here, talks about wetland permitting, which we won't have, but, um, any permitting has to be done appropriately. Then ultimately, um, this calls back to a petition and waiver agreement at the end that says that they understand there is a future assessment for that roadway. And this is very similar to what we did at the Belzer Car Dealership, um, over with future Third Street that is not yet constructed there as well. So not new language, just language specific to this plat, um, that the attorney has used for past agreements. So, um, that was really the, the big item in this one. And then item six, uh, A through, uh, B, we have developer fees for that water area charge, and then, um, siren fee, which are also outlined in the resolution for the plat.
Mm-hmm.
And then item seven is about park dedication. That's, uh, basically, uh, goes down to a number of employees that are expected to work on a site per our fee schedule. Again, that was outlined in the, uh, plat resolution. So just reiterating that in here, the agreement, because it gets recorded with the county, and, um, it's something that can't be lost, um, for paperwork, uh, down the road. We can easily pull it up by looking up the title of the property. So other than that, we didn't have anything out of the ordinary in the agreement. We certainly can send it back out to you to, uh, review. But everything else in here is just boilerplate language, um, about, uh, plats and who is notified if we have any, um, issues with, uh, the agreement down the road. So that really is all I can comment for you at this time. But, uh, I do apologize that it didn't make it in the packet. But, um, I guess the other thing I can note, there's a, uh, item in here about stormwater maintenance agreement that just basically says the private stormwater improvements are to be up kept by the developer. If they don't, we can step in and, you know, clean a pond to make sure it doesn't overflow, that kind of thing. Again, just boilerplate, uh, agreement that we have in there for any, any subdivision and or private development. So nothing new.
Is there any particular stormwater improvements on there?
Yeah, they actually have a stormwater pond they're putting in on kind of the very northwest corner of the property. We'll, we'll look at that in more detail here in the conditions permit review. But part of it's for, uh, where they can drop boats into the water, and then part of it's for, um, just, um, stormwater collection.
Fish?
I don't know about fish, I'll have to ask.
Would this, is it the conditional use permit or the, uh, this subdivision agreement that talked about the screening? I'm sorry.
Uh, conditions permit, and we'll.
Next.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
All right, any other questions on item I, the subdivision agreement? Otherwise, I'd take a motion to approve.
So, oh, excuse me, what is number C or letter C, or D, rather? Is it the D?
Exhibit D? There's a lot of exhibits in here, apologies. Uh, petition and waiver, that's, uh, relating specifically to the future roadway assessment.
Yes, sir.
I have a question, um, my name's Eric Placed, and I'm with Sterling State Bank. I'm helping Travis Brick.
Kate, come up here to the microphone, I'm sorry.
My name is Eric Placed, and I'm, um, with Sterling State Bank, and I'm helping Travis with the financing of the property. And I've talked to you, Ken, a couple times, and I was wondering if maybe we, maybe this isn't the right time, but I was wondering if we could talk about the, uh, developers and purchase agreement.
That's something our attorney has just talked to Tracy again today, I believe. So they were making progress on that. So I don't know if it's appropriate to talk about that here anymore since our attorney's working on that, but, uh.
Yeah, I didn't want to get ahead of myself, I just wanted to bring that people's attention as far as, um, well, if you don't think it's appropriate.
I don't know that we would be able to come to any conclusion at tonight's meeting, uh, regarding that. But I believe in talking to the city attorney at about four-thirty today that, uh, he and Tracy had worked out, um, some information that they thought would, would work. Basically, there was some question about the EDA's purchase and development agreement, and we have certain legal requirements that we had to have minimum improvements completed in certain buildings and a certain dollar value. And in this case, we had phasing of future buildings, uh, out in a five-year and a ten-year time period. So that was something the attorneys are working on, uh, kind of in the background at this point. And I think it was coming down to they were looking at some kind of a release, um, at some point here that would basically take your attorney's, um, concerns out of the picture. But they didn't have final resolution on that. And that was really more of an issue with that agreement versus the plat or the CUP or anything. So it didn't necessarily need to hold up any of these approvals, but it could hold up the closing on the property. But it sounded like they were reaching resolution though, so that.
Okay.
A good thing.
All right, I don't know. I guess this isn't an appropriate time then, but, uh, in essence, the bank or SBA, which is doing the financing can't close under the current conditions.
Okay.
It gives the, the city the right to take the property back. If he doesn't build the building, the future buildings, therefore, I don't think you'll find a bank and certainly not the SBA that will do a loan for five million bucks. And then if he doesn't build a billion in two years, then they can just take the property back and we're stuck with a four million dollar loan. That's the language, I guess, they're talking about right now, that I just want to protect my.
Yep.
Borrower.
Understand.
No, understood.
Thank you.
I mean, you did, I know that you said this in passing, but you did say that are there, are they, uh, putting in a pond that's more than a water retention pond, then?
Uh, yes, we'll go over that in the conditions permit review.
Okay.
All right, so did we have, uh, you made a motion on the subdivision agreement? Is there a second?
Second.
Bruce made the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we're at resolution, um, the next resolution on the conditional use permit to allow exterior storage and so on.
All right, so I have another summary PowerPoint from the, uh, March twenty-second planning commission meeting. And again, this is a conditions permit for the outdoor storage and also for, um, limited retail sales in the Iowa Light Industrial District. So a little background, um, I know we talked about this when we talked about the purchase agreement, um, that was forwarded from the EDA, but, um, Brick's Boatworks is looking at constructing, um, three buildings for their main, um, operation to start with here on, in the first phase. So main building of about fifteen thousand square feet, that would include office, little showroom, and then kind of a shop area. Uh, they also are looking at, uh, eventually building seven outdoor, or seven buildings for indoor storage. Uh, those are about eleven thousand eight hundred and eighty square feet, and those are what are phased in, or, uh, in the purchase and development agreement, and actually one of the conditions of the conditions permit to be phased in over a ten-year time period. Um, the outdoor storage area where these buildings are located will also be fenced in and screened, and those will be used for the parking of boats and recreational equipment wrapped in white shrink wrap. Uh, the exterior storage and limited sales are condition uses in the Iowa Light Industrial District, which is why we are reviewing under a condition use permit. Uh, we did have a public hearing with the planning commission on March twenty-second. We did have comments from, uh, Jamie from, uh, Ram General Contracting and Travis from Brick's Boatworks regarding, uh, landscaping specific to, uh, northeast and south sides of the site, and we'll get into that in a minute. And ultimately, the planning commission recommended, um, approval. And I'll talk about this more when I go over the, the site plan here in a second. But ultimately, the west side of the site will be, uh, full double row of, uh, screening trees and a, um, chain link fence with privacy slats behind it on that west side between the residential and the commercial property or the industrial property. And then, um, around the north site, a single row of trees backed by, again, the same chain link fence with vinyl privacy slats. And then that'll be on the east and north side. And then on the south side, um, along the parking lot and some of the other front edge of the building, reducing that to forty-foot spacing on the trees and only, uh, fencing near the, um, two storage buildings, uh, where it's in front of the parking lot and the main building. We want to actually keep visibility there, so. We'll, we'll run into a, um, couple of, uh, renderings and photos here in a minute. So one other additional condition related to the landscaping that was added in here based on discussion at the planning commission meeting was that, uh, within five years of approval of the conditions permit, and Sean, I think this is one that you had, uh, talked about and was added to the, um, uh, resolution from the planning commission's review. So within that five years of the conditions permit approval, that should any, um, landscaping requirement, um, be reviewed if the requirements change or if residential development occurs on that west side of the site. So that was a condition added in there based on discussion at the planning commission meeting. Again, this is the same, uh, air photo overview, and really the, the very important portion of screenings on that west side of the site, where you've got the division between the industrial and the, um, medium density residential future, uh, developed property there. It's kind of the overarching view of the hundred-plus acre, um, build out of the industrial park. The city's initial plat just included, uh, the lots right up front, and you can see the additional four acres, you can kind of follow my pointer there. This is the four acres of property that they are purchasing from, uh, the entity to the north. We've already got the annexation approved and through for that, but their site overall is at roughly ten acre site, um, as you see it here. So everything fits in with the, uh, future roadway alignments that we have planned out for the development that were planned back in twenty fifteen. And as far as, um, how that situates in there, this is kind of a good representation of, of that. Zooming in a little further here, so again, the dual staggered row of trees meets our requirement in the zoning ordinance for the double row of, uh, trees there. And then, uh, behind that is the, uh, chain link fence with the privacy slats behind it. So, uh, the point of discussion we had, this drawing in here actually still shows the dual row along the north and, um, east elevation, uh, e- east side of the site. But, uh, we ended up, um, with the planning commission's discussion, um, just, we didn't have a requirement that adjacent to internal industrial land, that it have to be the dual row of screening like we do to the residential. So the planning commission recommended this just be trees in a single row at thirty-five foot spacing, still keeping that, um, privacy fence behind there, and then extending that thirty-five foot tree spacing in a single row along the east side of the site. Um, once you get up to the corner of the building, that's reduced to forty feet, and that just meets our normal, um, industrial landscaping adjacent to, um, industrial or commercial parking lots for that matter, and then extending that along, uh, the front of the building. So that was really the bulk of the discussion at the planning commission meeting regarding that, um, screening there. And, um, regarding the pond, Bruce, and I think I have a little bit better, um, schematic of this, but basically, um, the west side of the pond is for stormwater use. Maybe you can see on the drawing here, there's like a, a boat ramp, as it were, on the very, uh, east side here. Basically bifurcated down the middle, and they plan to use that for, um, dropping boats into there rather than running out to a nearby lake. One of the conditions in the conditions permit, uh, review is regarding hours of operation of dropping boats and running engines in, um, that, uh, particular body of water. So it's actually separate completely from the stormwater pond. It looks like they're together, but it is really separate from the treatment and, um, holding aspect of the, uh, of the west side of that pond.
So the outlet for the stormwater on the west side is on the west, or?
Uh, the outlet ultimately will go into a drain tile on the north, into the north property owner. We have a signed drain tile agreement from that property.
Going across the north border.
Correct, correct.
And then, um, I just want to make sure I understood, is the, the fencing surrounding the whole parcel?
Yeah, this, or we'll go to another drawing here. This rendering down in the south, uh, I'll just say the bottom right-hand side of the screen, you can see the fencing basically will go from each corner of the building and surround the entire site. So it will be a secured gated, um, outdoor storage area, including all of the storage buildings and the parking of the boats, set or shrink wrapped and everything, um, in that open storage area. So it's a secure environment. Fire department, uh, requested a gate code and or Knox box for access to that in case there's a fire, um, in that area, and, uh, had no issues with providing that.
How deep will the water be?
Um, I don't know, do you remember off the top of your head how deep the pond water is?
On, well, on the, on the west half, it's probably gonna be about four, or. I have a boat ramp, I think. Max height would probably be about eight feet.
Okay.
Most of the time it's gonna maintain it.
Yeah, I mean, and obviously I just think of kids jumping over and trying to get into it, but.
One thing to do is right travel.
Oh, no. No, just to run the motor, I get it, but, yeah.
What's that, what's?
How high is the fence, Dan?
Six foot tall.
Okay. Yeah, you're just gonna, you know, there's nobody behind you, and that's just a quiet space for kids to run into. So I, I think you have it addressed.
Yeah, it's completely secured.
What was the hours of operation?
Oh, sorry, um. Let me back up to the packet here.
I don't know if we determined that in during the.
Seven to seven, I think it read.
On the, on the running.
Mm-hmm. I'll pull up the exact time in here.
Does that follow normal?
Yeah, it's our typical.
Okay.
Our typical noise ordinance requirements, yeah, sweet. Seven AM, seven PM.
Yep, with all the street stuff going on by my house. They're there at seven.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, that's really all I had for, um, staff report. I don't know if, uh, the applicants have any other feedback to provide. Excuse me.
Do you guys have anything? Okay. Otherwise, I would take a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved, I'll, um, make a motion to approve res- resolution twenty-three, zero, four, seventeen, zero, two, the conditional use permit, C two, twenty, twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion made by Maggie, seconded by Rick. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. So the next item on the agenda is setting a public hearing to vacate the certain easements in the plat of the dome subdivision.
That's the resolution from the, we talked about earlier for the introduction of the ordinance, correct? So we want that hearing to be on May fifteenth.
Okay. So I'll make that resolution, uh, twenty-three, dash, zero, four, dash, one, seven, dash, zero, three, setting a public hearing. So, I'll make that resolution uh twenty-three dash zero four dash one seven dash zero three, setting a public hearing to vacate certain assessments in the plat of the dome subdivision. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Bruce, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item, item D, is accepting a donation from the New Prague Basketball Boys Basketball Association. There's been a motion made by Rick, seconded by, oh, who wants to second it?
I'll say.
Okay, uh seconded by Sean to accept the donation of resol- uh resolution number twenty-three dash zero four one seven dash zero four. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, resolution number twenty-three oh four seventeen oh five is amending and restating the enabling resolution of the EDA.
Uh, yes, we talked about this in the last meeting, um some questions arose as to uh the EDA's powers.
Thanks, guys, good luck.
Thank you.
Uh, and council wanted to see a few changes such as allowing the council to transfer funds out of the EDA um for lowering debt um as well as requiring the council uh to approve any sort of land acquisitions or development projects, so I did make those changes in there. Uh, if you read through the resolution, um in section four, which I have marked as section five.
Got a page?
Uh, page one oh five. Uh, transfer of funds was put in, I need to change all those to say section four, I don't know how I missed that messed that up. Uh, so it reads as section five point four, transfer of funds at the bottom of page three. Uh, basically copy and paste that state code language out into here, uh that allows for the city council by resolution to transfer those funds out. The other question then being require a city council requiring approval for a number of um items, if you go to uh the actual section five, starting on the next page on page uh one oh six of your packet, uh and read through that. Uh, section five point two, acquisition of property uh requires city council approval, construction contracts. Ultimately require uh city council approval if they are in excess of funds that they currently hold. And then section five point six talks about uh contracts that the city coun- or the EDA cannot get into the purchase or selling of real estate or personal property without prior approval by the city council.
All right, so um I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-three oh four seventeen oh five. As long as the amended and restated um bylaws uh section numbering is corrected. So, we'll note that uh in section four, the subsections need to be renumbered accordingly. In section five, we have a duplicate, section five point three. So, that needs to be renumbered as well. And I'm just sorry, I just want to make sure that we're okay elsewhere.
Nope, you look at.
Okay, so yeah, so if we make those changes to correct the numbering within the bylaws.
Okay. There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second, I have a quick question here before we vote though.
Okay, there's been a second by Rick, go ahead.
Um, so you said this was a cut and paste from this, if I go back to page three, which under section four, which is listed as section five point four, the transfer of funds. Um, does it, that's the cut and paste you said from the state?
Yes, that's the that's the language we had in our current, like our current existing bylaws, and if you go out to their state language. I'm pretty sure that's the cut and paste out of there, yeah.
Okay, does it handcuff us in any way when it says, or it's listed as, determined, uh well, let's just read the whole thing, so. Except when previously pledged by the EDA, the city council may by resolution require the EDA to transfer any portion of the reserves generated by activities of the EDA that the city council determines are not necessary for the successful operation of the EDA to the debt service fund of the city to be used solely to reduce tax levies for bond indebtedness uh of the city.
Correct.
Does that handcuff us at all, though, that there's a, somebody can argue that that somehow would not allow the EDA to be successful, let's say we needed the whole outstanding fund?
Yep. I mean, I I suppose you could probably make that argument about anybody that shows up in opposition to a project. Um, I I guess this this was the language that like all the attorneys basically argued over and made it into our current. Um, but the city council by resolution could say, okay, we at a vote of even three to two passed this resolution saying that those funds are not necessary. And so, it is, uh, the city council gets to determine whether they are necessary or not. And so, as long as a majority vote of the city council determines that those funds are not necessary, they would be able to pull those out.
Okay, I just, the way I was reading it, it made it sound like the EDA could maybe fight it, saying that, no, we need something, and we wouldn't be able to.
And I would be, I would be surprised if at least one member of the EDA didn't show up to fight it, or in some way. Or all of them, but the city council would have that ability um per this to, like I said, by three-two vote, um pull those funds.
And I would think that that would be a time in our in time that the city would be hurting and would really need that money.
I'm assuming.
You know, I would assume that there'd have to be some drastic.
Correct.
Absolutely.
Something like that, yeah.
And I hope we don't get there, but I guess it's curious, the way I was reading it, made it sound like I could hold that up if we needed that.
Well, I think we're u- I I if we're still using the same verbiage from before, it's right out of state statute.
Correct.
State statute says that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so there was a motion as second, and we had discussion, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. Now, we're down to general business, and the next item under A is establish special city council meeting dates for board and commission interviews.
Are we there already?
Now, June is when they're up.
We've made it. Uh, yes, so I I included the applicants as well as the openings. Um, we got, we got some uh new people who are looking to get on, as well as a couple of renewals. Uh, they're the only contested seats, I guess you could say, we have at this point uh are coming from the planning commission. We have one open term, uh and a uh incumbent and two new uh potential planning commissioners.
That's something, last year we couldn't get enough, and this year. Oh, my. So, can you tell me what the what the requirements for that um youth application is? How old they have to be or, yeah?
Yeah, you just need to be a um
Do you have to be?
In high school, and you don't necessarily need to be a resident of New Prague. Uh, and you also cannot be a senior because you won't make it through the whole term.
So, you're looking at freshman through junior?
Junior.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So, I guess I was just looking from uh you all of when you would like to get together. I would recommend probably sk- picking two dates just to make sure um people are able to make them.
In May?
Sometime either here at the end of April or in May. And it would be one of those things where if they happen after May fifteenth, um technically, we can approve stuff that night, we would then, after the interviews, just call a special meeting and approve any of the application, or approve the interviews that way by June one, uh when the new terms start, they're ready to go.
So, you'd like to have them before the fifteenth or on on the fifteenth or before?
I mean, that that, it could happen, like I said, you you during a special meeting, you can approve things, and so if it happened after the fifteenth, after all the interviews, we'd just come together real quick and announce them, and then I'd probably send the names to the paper unless Patrick's gonna hang out with us.
What does everybody's calendars look like? I mean, next week already is tight.
I think last time we did some before the council meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I believe that's correct, and we could try that, we can see how many we can fit on May first, and then if we have any that we couldn't fit, maybe we try May fifteenth and.
Yeah, I'd like to do that, I mean, that seemed to work out the last time, I think we started the council meetings like at five fifteen or five o'clock.
Yeah, I mean, I would, when we do, I'd say five fifteen or five thirty, and you could knock three or four of them out, I mean, they don't have to be overly long unless you guys really want to dig into their policy stances.
I'm just happy we have people that have signed up.
Yeah, this time, yep.
I'd be fine with rubber stamping them right now.
Commission.
Whatever you guys decide, I'm good.
I guess, are you all available at five thirty on those two meetings?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we will reach out and see how many we can get scheduled for five to ten minute.
So, May first, it's um five fifteen?
I would, I would, well, Barb did five fifteen.
Yeah.
She's she started them just to.
Yep, yeah, if five fifteen works, we can start at five fifteen and see if we can get them all done on May first.
Well, or, and I mean, and then if some laps over to the fifteenth, we'd be good.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we've got one, two, three, four, five interviews. So, that's an hour and fifteen.
Yeah, so you wouldn't get them done in.
If you do, when I was on a planning commission, um a number of years ago, they did five minute interviews. But granted, they were going through, they had sixty people that were trying to interview in a day.
Yeah, we've typically capped it at fifteen.
And usually, they're done in ten, and we can just keep them going, you know?
Okay.
So.
Okay, I will get those set up and spread out over those two days.
Perfect, thank you. Secure destruction, or next item, item B, secure destruction of police computer hard drives. Chief?
Yes, thank you, I've gone through in the process and am now completed updating our inventory and equipment list. Um, during that process, I came up with this list that you have in your memo of computers that are no longer used by the police department. Um, many of them are severely outdated. Um, but I I want to make sure that they're um destroyed securely because of the CGIS information that those computers may or may not have on them. Um, I spoke with CTS, they are able to destroy the the laptops um securely, along with the hard drives from the desktop computers. And they would provide a certificate of destruction then that says that these were securely destroyed, not compromising any of our CGIS information or and that's a, that is BCA compliant as well. Um, we had uh one computer that was a spare, and then there were two, two new computers that um have Windows seven on them, so I talked with the fire chief Rinda, and he's able to use a lot, utilize those in the chief's vehicles to access LETG. Uh, the reason we can't utilize them is they don't operate some of the other systems that we utilize, whereas the fire department would just use them for their LETG, the mobile computers, they could get information on their calls in their trucks, so um they're working with IT on getting those set up, so um able to repurpose those three, and then we would securely destroy um the remaining on this list.
So, is the, are there cars or is there um, geez, computers uh from the cars or from the squad cars?
Both, so the des- desktop computers were in the office, and then the laptops were in the cars.
And the ones that were in the cars, were they, were they damaged or just out of date?
Both.
Both. So, is the cold weather affecting them?
No, the cold weather doesn't affect them, um it's essentially with computers, it's a technology, it just gets outdated in computers. Um, I think when you go and buy a new computer, they tell you the the minute you buy it, it's out of date, so. Just keeping up with that technology, and then the operating systems, when we transferred to um CTS, they updated our computers to the Lenovo's that we have now that have the current operating system, so we're able to with some of the mapping and things in in LETG and some other programs that we have, um those computers didn't support what we needed to run in the squad cars, so we had to update to the the Lenovo's, so.
Okay.
The Panasonic's that you mentioned that you're um repurposing for the fire department, I met, do they have hard drives that are going to be cleaned then by CTS?
So, those three were, didn't, uh, the two were brand new, so never had any CGIS, we'd never installed them, or they're still in a box.
No one ever used them?
No one ever used them, and then the one computer, um our backup, didn't have anything installed on it, was essentially a spare in the event that we needed to, one of ours broke or got destroyed or something.
Was never used?
It was never used, so that didn't contain any CGIS data.
So, there's no search history that someone could have done on Google or anything then?
Correct.
Okay.
So, what do we need, a motion to uh securely destroy those police computer hard drives?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion made, and seconded by Bruce. Um, any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. The next item is C, um sale of Tasers X twenty-six and X twenty-six P units.
Uh, much of the same as the computers, uh we have our old Taser units that we no longer utilize. Uh, in twenty seventeen, Taser announced that they were not going to support these any longer. So, the programs that are used to download them and hardware and things that we would need to replace these Tasers are no longer supported by Taser, so um I checked with the jail, thinking maybe they they still utilize those because sometimes they'll use hand-me-downs from the patrol or they no longer utilize these either. Um, so there's, Taser does not want them because they don't support them any longer, so they said we won't. We have no reason, no, no use for them, so he said, just throw them away. And I looked at him and I said, why? I have a hard time throwing these away, so I did some research and I found a a a security company that will, that will purchase these. Um, and they're out of Florida, and they sometimes repurpose them, and then they resell them to like a security agency, and they can just use them as is, and they don't need the support and the the technical and the the evidentiary piece that law enforcement does, so. They're willing to to give us those prices that are listed on your your memo for those, so rather than throwing them away, I would suggest that we get a little something for them.
Yeah.
Sure. Cool, okay.
Do you, you need action for that?
Yep.
Yes.
So, is there a motion to approve the sale of the old Tasers?
So moved.
Maggie made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Rick made the second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Quick question on the refresh program, is that like a lease, we're leasing them now or?
The, excuse me, I learned that the auditors don't like the word lease, but it's a, it's it's a, it's a refresh program, so what it does is when we we sign up for them, and then when the new model comes out, we get the the newest model, so it's a three year um term, so then when so I think next year is when our our Taser contract is up, and then the squad cameras are up next year too. So, then we'll get the next model of those, and then we just send that back to Taser, and they do give us a credit for those. So, that's part of that refresh program, so we won't be in this position again where we end up with equipment that we've bought and have nothing to do, have no use for it, or have to worry about getting rid of the we send that back and they send us the new, and we've done that once already with our our body cameras.
So, are we making payments every month for three years?
Yes.
And then they alter the payment?
Yep.
Sounds like a lease.
Yep.
Well, like, like our um our our squad car dash cams, did you say something about that?
Yeah, same program, um that's on the refresh program as well, so.
So, and you send that to Axios or?
Axon, yeah.
Axon?
Yep, so in the, in the squad cars, they actually have, um, they have to be certified installers to put those in. So, the company that we use is a certified installer of Axon products, so they're able to install those correctly and make sure that everything is working and.
That shocks me, I mean, how many years ago would we put them in, I mean, that was four years ago?
Yeah.
So, every four years or five years?
Yes.
All right, next item is a joint council planning commission workshop.
Yeah, so um, Mr. Mayor, you remember at our um task force meeting, or steering committee meeting, excuse me, we had at the very tail end of that kind of a SWAT analysis, uh looked at strength, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats for the city. Uh, the consultant would like to run through that exercise with the council and the planning commission in a joint meeting. They expected to take hour, maybe an hour and a half, half tops to go through that. Um, so they're just looking for a date to do that, uh they would like to start at six o'clock, um so it would run from six to maybe seven thirty. Um, in the packet, I have calendar for the month of April and May. And the uh dates highlighted in red are the dates that they are available for that. So, if any of those dates may work with the council for a six PM start time, that's what we're looking for, having that done. So, we can get that um input from both of your um. So we can get that, um, input from both of your, um, bodies, uh, from planning commission and council to continue to move data collection forward.
April twenty-seventh does not work for me.
Yeah, me neither.
Me neither.
I was looking more like at the third.
Doesn't work for me on the third either.
The third and the fourth.
Okay.
Couldn't we do it the night of the planning committee, just because that's just one less?
Uh, they're not available on the actual planning commission meeting day, if that's where, if you're asking about.
On the twenty, no, I was talking, oh, the twenty-fourth of May.
They're not available then.
Oh, they, okay.
I can do Thursday the fourth or the eighteenth.
Not the eighth or tenth?
Does everybody look on the eighteen?
Pardon?
Not the eighth or the tenth?
No, I can't do Wednesdays, the eighth I can do, Monday the eighth.
I can do the eighth.
I can do it.
I can do the eighth.
I'm, I can too.
Only the eighth?
Bingo, 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 bingo. Wow.
Sounds good. All right, we'll set that for Monday the eighth.
The eighth is a, we're starting at what time?
Eight.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Actually, Isaac's home during that time, so. All right.
Thank you.
Yep, the next item up is the memo, item E, uh, the temporary patio extension and outdoor music request. At thirteen nineteen.
This is a similar, or the same setup as they had for Dozenki that was approved last year, looking for a one night, um, one night permit or, uh, I guess, extension of their, their patio for Cinco de Mayo. Um, with the restrictions that are, uh, in the memo, um, everything would be fenced in, um, contained within the inside, they're actually gonna have some of their own security as well, they're monitoring the sale and people coming and going, so, um, I don't see any issues with this, and we didn't have any issues with the the setup with people coming and going with the previous approval for Dozenki last year.
Okay. So, I would take a motion to approve the um, request of thirteen nineteen. There's been a motion made by Sean, is there a second?
A second.
Um, any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, um, we're down to miscellaneous, um, minutes of the previous meetings were in there, charter commission was a record seven minutes the other night.
Uh, six minutes.
Six minutes.
Six oh one to six oh seven.
Oh, six oh one to six oh seven, okay, and people that were not there got voted into offices?
Get your pen ready, Sean, you're the secretary.
Um, so anyway, but, uh, that's, that's, um, that was, um, a nice meeting, quick, easy, so, I'll go around the horn, Matt? Chief?
Nothing more, thank you.
Ken?
Nothing.
Josh?
Just a reminder, we have our facilities workshop tomorrow, uh, starting at five.
At five?
So.
Okay.
At five tomorrow.
Yep, the, uh, the idea basically being we will further kinda discuss the study in depth of where we're at, if anybody wants, um, some further explanations, especially on this building of, uh, some of the things that the, uh, that WOLD would recommend we either take care of or should be on our list for some reason, we're not moving anytime in the very near future. Um, and then maybe go into how we foresee the whole study fleshing out and what sort of plan we may put in place for anything moving forward, so hopefully it doesn't go all night long, um, but and basically talk facilities all night.
Okay. Maggie?
I don't have anything.
Um, Sean?
Um, just a quick question for Ken, any updates on the truck storage park, um?
Yeah, so I had a little update in the, uh, weekly update last week, so the, uh, owner cleaned up the very north end that had the truck driving school, that was done by the end of, uh, March, I had talked with, uh, the owner Trevor who then had looped me in with his client and their attorney. Uh, they had found location for roughly half the vehicles that have to be out of there, actually by tomorrow morning, I believe. And, um, they asked for another, uh, slight extension to the end of the month to get the remainder out of there. Um, since they're making progress, I gave them that timeframe, they're making a good effort. Trevor actually, uh, was playing hardball with them, uh, threatening to cancel the tenant's, um, uh, contract, which is why the attorney contacted me to, um, see if he could get some extra time to, to get the cleanup done, cause they didn't honestly know where they were gonna put them, so, um.
Well, wait, so can you explain that a little bit more, so Trevor knowingly put them there?
He did not.
And he didn't know that?
He didn't know that they were gonna make them basically a junk vehicle collection, he had signed a lease for vehicle storage, not that they would be inoperable and smashed vehicles, so. Yeah, he could have canceled the, the contract, uh, right then and there, but they didn't have anywhere to put them anyway, so, um, just in talking with them in general, they were making progress, so I'll check in the morning and then, um.
No, I'm still a little confused though, I'm trying to get this straight, so Trevor owns the thing, right?
Correct.
He was the one that came in and petitioned the planning and council. And then what, did he subcontract that out to somebody else that brought those?
Just a tenant that he's leasing that area of the site to.
Oh, so that tenant is leasing multiple chunks of.
Correct.
Okay, so how can we make sure that this doesn't happen again and that we're?
Uh, made it very clear to Trevor, he needs language in his leases that he cannot have that, um, situation happening again with basically any vehicle that's unlicensed, inoperable and junk, as it were, for state statute, so.
So ultimately, he's responsible for his tenant.
Correct.
And he should have known that the tenant was in violation.
He should have known.
Did he, did he put the city at, and I, I mean, if they wanted to fight that, we get stuck looking at it because Trevor failed to put?
No, not at all, nope, nope, we could have forced that issue, but.
Oh, okay, I just wanna make sure.
With the good, uh, progress they made on that north end, uh, quickly, um, I think Trevor is making efforts to get it cleaned up.
Okay.
And what'd you say about a truck driving school?
That's what was operating in the very north end of the site.
So let me get this, you just thought that they could open a truck driving school in a, uh, any property they wanted or?
That's what they believed.
Was that Trevor or was that?
That was Trevor.
I guess.
If, if I remember that conditional use permit, it, that only allowed so many vehicles to go.
It was very clear, yeah, it was very clear.
Okay.
He's had nothing to fight on either of these as the owner.
No, but, and I'm thinking of all the mud that he carried out on the, our roads and on state highways and.
Oh.
All right.
He's not a very good steward of.
Nope.
And that's probably why the property's for sale at this point, I don't know if he's just done dealing with it or what, but.
He still owes us some screening out front there too.
Uh, they have some replants they have to do, some trees did not make it.
Yeah, but what, don't they along, uh, where the truck driving school was there, uh, on the north edge?
Um, they did get everything planted in there, but some of those are gonna have to replant, they just did not make it.
Oh, they did replant, okay, I didn't look closely enough, all right, thank you.
But the replants didn't make it, I can already tell that.
Mm-hmm, there's a lot of.
A lot of brown.
Orange ones.
Yep.
Maybe they could come to the tree sale and learn how to plant a tree.
Are you gonna be teaching that class?
I'm not teaching it.
No, I, I was looking at Matt, oh man.
Soil and water will be doing that.
Okay. Nope. Anything else, Sean?
No, that was it, I just wanted to.
I don't have anything, um, Bruce?
Couple things then, um, tomorrow, are you sending out information ahead of time or are you, uh, is there any information you're providing?
Uh, at this point, I've received no information from, uh, John, but I'll reach out to him in the morning to see if he wants to, uh, share anything with you guys ahead of time or kinda where we're going with that. Um, as of right now, there's nothing, I'll be sending you guys ahead of time, but if something comes up in the morning, I'll certainly send it.
Other than what we've had?
Other than what we've had so far.
For tomorrow night?
For tomorrow night.
So that you're not this financial projection for three years?
I will be bringing that with me tomorrow morning, or tomorrow evening, yes.
So you're gonna give us a packet of information so that we can?
Correct.
Surprise us, huh? On the meeting for the eighth, can we get whatever information, plenty of time ahead of time, so if there's things we need to be ready for?
All for the comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
Yep.
I don't know if there's questions, they'll be asked of us or if we're supposed to brainstorm.
Yeah, um, I actually do have all those questions, I can send that out at any point to you.
Just so it's before the seventh or sixth or a few days.
Yep, we can do that.
Um, the basketball donation, do we normally put that in the newsletter or?
Yeah.
Should we, could we?
We did last year, I believe, we can do that again.
Do we n- normally do that then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, in the financial statements, I think, is Robin back yet?
She is back, yes.
Okay, so, um, I can't recall if she's done it in the past, but, um, previous to, we, we usually had a narrative just kinda describing the quarter, any highlights, any very significant variances, it normally was like a quick page.
Yep.
Just bullet points, things are going good, we didn't get property taxes yet, you can look at some of the old ones, but I think that's still good to to let us know that.
Okay.
People are looking at it and.
Yeah.
Significant variances.
Yeah, we're, I am always trying to figure out ways to improve getting information out to you guys and so we can definitely put narratives with stuff more.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be anything big, especially if there's nothing going, going on.
I know Rick, I know Rick likes to read, so I'll, I'll fill space, you don't get graduate degrees without learning how to write.
Write it down.
Thing that's tricky sometimes is we straight line our budgets, we kinda divide by twelve and have even numbers. So there's a lot of timing issues that look big to me or other people when you look at it, but the, but, um, they it's good to have reminders of what that stuff is and why we're that way and
Yep.
You know, we don't know what, what affected the snow have on us and, you know, how much money was over time and I get that, but, you know, how do, is that a big issue to us or not?
Yeah.
And you can address that in your narrative or whoever wants to, to do that.
Okay.
Um, and the tree giveaway, I was wondering, how are we promoting that or how was that?
Social media, the newsletter, um, that will, uh, well, basically should have come out in the past couple of days, was in there. Was in actually the March one as well.
Okay.
So, just go on the website, you can sign up and if you don't wanna go on the website, you can just call the office and we'll get you on the list too.
I think there was something in the newspaper as well.
Okay.
When, when is that?
That's writing feverishly back there. Saturday the twenty-nine.
Oh, okay.
Are these bear root plants or?
They're bear roots, yeah.
Okay.
Somewhere between two to three feet tall, so they're not little tiny seedlings.
Okay. Uh, and then lastly, um, just following up with the school and understanding that they're discussing canceling the community resource um, program or, and I'm assuming that you're, they've contacted us about that?
So, we're, we're doing a few things in the background with that, um, it was discovered a couple months ago that we've never had a formal agreement for SRO work. So Tim and I have been working with Scott Riggs and we've got a formal agreement that we've drafted, we've got sent over to them. We also have a meeting, uh, with Tim and a couple principals tomorrow, I think. Um, and then Tim and I may also be visiting the school board meeting next week, just to talk to the school board, uh, about this, to make sure that they understand the gravity of what they are trying to do, so, um, or potentially doing, I should say, I don't, we don't, it's not a fortunate thing yet, so.
Yeah, it's not approved yet, I think the, the presentation was that they're, they're gonna get completely out of it.
Correct.
Um, so it certainly would affect us yeah, considerably. So, you know, are, so just to follow up on that, are we still o- have an open position that we're trying to fill?
We have one after the additional two that were approved, so approved for twelve. We are currently at ten right now. Um, going through the process for sergeant, we now have interviews tomorrow to do that, that would be number eleven. And then, um, we're hoping that, uh, the school budget and things worked themselves out so we can figure out what we're gonna do next.
Do they pay, pay that full salary or do they pay, split it with us?
They historically have, yes.
Historically, um, the agreement going forward would be seventy-five percent, since that person does come back to us for three months out of the year that we utilize them during the summer.
Way back when, if I remember correctly, wasn't, I thought the position was almost fully paid by the federal government, as it, when it first started.
Initially it was, um, it started as a grant position and then the school assumed that after the grant expired.
Okay. And is the school board gonna make that decision on Monday?
Process.
No.
It's, it's part of their budget, I believe they approved their budget the last meeting in June, um, cause their, their fiscal year ends in June, so, um, but I mean, at this, this point, they've been in the talks the last few meetings and I think they're getting down to wrapping up all the little nuances so they can put it together, so.
Well, let's make sure we don't extend an offer to somebody just in case they do nix it and then we're one ahead.
Yep, and that's where Tim and I have been talking about that position, I mean, I would guess within the next meeting or two from them, we'll be able to know where they're going.
So what about if the, I mean, the legislature has a lot to play into this too? They're talking, you know, funding for the school, but nobody knows, or the schools, nobody knows.
Was it two, two point two billion or something that was going back to?
Yeah, but.
Nobody knows how much or where yet, so, yeah, I think that's gonna have some, some impact on decisions too.
Yes.
And there was a, a bill for public safety money too, right?
There was.
Yep.
So, would we be in the, have the potential to apply for that or?
Potentially, um, I've heard, uh, rumblings, different things are that I've heard a lot of different numbers coming out, so I hate to commit to anything, but it could be, it could be a substantial amount of money for public safety. Um, but again, how that money is gonna get distributed and where is kinda still up in the air, so um, I hate to put the cart before the horse and, you know, so we'll wait and see how that money gets divided by the legislature and we can make some decisions after that happens, so, but yes, I think there's a potential there that there's gonna be some money coming back to public safety as well.
The public safety money, as I understand it, would be coming to the, either the city or the municipality, I don't think there's any kinda public safety going to the school in their discussion.
No, two separate.
No legislation.
Correct.
Discussion, there's nothing that the school would.
But there's separate money for.
But, but I was thinking, yeah, for the education, nobody knows where that money is going either, so, it's.
That's all I have. Yeah, so, like I said, we'll be meeting with, uh, school officials tomorrow and Tim and I will probably be visiting the school board meeting next week to talk to them, um, during their public comment time, so.
Okay, thank you. Rick?
Yeah, I got a couple questions here on, um, the, uh, May eighth, that is the one for the comprehensive plan, right?
Correct.
For the joint, and then you're gonna set another date after that then for our next meeting?
For?
On the comprehensive plan or is it the last meeting?
So that's just a special workshop meeting, there's another steering committing meeting that will come up in May.
Okay.
There will likely be meetings all year long for that. So we'll let you know about that, Rick.
Okay. Anything else, otherwise I'd, um, take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Motion by Rick, second by Maggie, any other discussion, I, I heard, on, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Shouldn't ask that, I'm so used to it, okay, and then in a little bit, we'll go into that special.
Yep.
I don't. No, John, you were called me. Hey, Josh? Just wanted to know. That's just kinda just a. The first, the, uh, Arbor Day thing? I'm pretty sure it had wear as thirty-seven back.
Did it? To make sure people know why. Why are we doing?
I was just curious, uh, if it was somebody in the neighborhood, I mean, nobody's contact.
And that even directly affects your neighborhood.
Yeah, that's why I thought, that's, those are all your neighbors, but no, he just wanted to know, his, his general perception of that meeting was that that, that there was a lot of people upset, and that's why I asked Matt, just to make a little synopsis, and he said, there's, there's, just, just the one. And I remember when we were first talking about it in February when the bids came out, remember?
Yeah, that, that one night, yeah.
And he didn't want the sidewalk on his side yesterday.
Yeah.
I'm the one that was here.
The action of the flow and.
And sense for that.
Yeah, when we had that meeting, um, for the. First introduced the project.
Nat.
I don't know what his name is, I, I don't even remember his address, but he definitely does not want his, uh.
Oh, I knew you were gonna ask me that name, I like talking like that.
You can email it or, can't think of it, I just.
Is this the guy that lives right on the corner?
Was it the guy that was here that night? Was it the guy that was here that night?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, okay, not the same guy then that was.